Bien, gracias por estar aquí. Buenas tardes, esta es la reunión del Comité de Desarrollo Civico, Puestos de Poder y Comunidades Natives. El día es miércoles, el 5 de junio, y el tiempo es las 2:06. Estoy acompañada de la membresía del Consejo, González, la membresía Mosqueta, la membresía Sawant, y mi comprensión es que la membresía Bagshaw está en camino. Quiero agradecer a mis colegas por estar aquí hoy. Quiero comenzar con reconocer a algunos de los que tenemos aquí. Tenemos a Chris Fisher de la SPD aquí hoy, gracias Chris. Tenemos a Julie Klein, Asesora de Política para el oficio del Ayuntamiento, que también está aquí hoy. Gracias Julie por estar aquí. Y tenemos a John, John del oficio de los abogados de la ciudad. Bien, y también tenemos a Liz Tale aquí de la tribu de Calitz. Bien Liz, bien de verte. Y veamos, mi hija supone que estará aquí, pero no está, así que dejaré eso. Entonces, déjame hacer el informe de las asesoras. Hoy es una reunión muy especial para mí y para nuestra comunidad, la comunidad natale-americana. Tenemos un elemento en la agenda, y es una presentación sobre una epidemia de mujeres y niños perdidas y asesinadas indígenas en toda nuestra nación. United Indians for Health Institute, UIHI, es una división de la Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle, que se centra en las nacionales, las indias urbanas y las poblaciones nativas de Alaska. UIHI proporciona sistemas de información de salud pública, investiga enfermedades de preocupación, y involucra recursos vitales de información y recursos de salud públicas con otros autoridades. Estoy honrada de tener a la directora de la Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle, la señora Abigail Echo Hawk, y la señora Esther Lucero y su equipo, para presentar sus descubrimientos y conclusiones sobre este tema: las mujeres y niños perdidas y asesinadas indígenas, y cómo se ha afectado Seattle. Esto tiene un significado emocional y personal muy especial para mí, no solo como mujer nativa, sino como madre para esta comunidad. Esta cuestión de las mujeres y niños perdidas y asesinadas indígenas ha estado en el radar, no solo en este país, sino en Canadá, durante más de una década, donde finalmente empezamos a tomar nota. Creo que lo que vamos a oír hoy, algunos de estos temas pueden estar desencadenando. Sé que ciertamente fue para mí. Hablaré un poco más tarde en algunos comentarios sobre el reciente informe que salió el lunes, el informe canadiense. Pero aquellos de nosotros que crecimos en un país indígena, y aquellos de nosotros que trabajamos en comunidades canadienses, y aquellos de nosotros que sabemos cuál ha sido nuestra relación con la seguridad pública y el valor de las mujeres nativas en nuestras vidas, han vivido esta historia. Y quiero agradecerte a todos por estar aquí. Así que lo primero que haremos es ir al comentario público. Después del comentario público, haré que nuestros presentadores se acerquen y se presenten. Haceré algunos comentarios breves, o haré una declaración que quisiera hacer, y luego les gustaría que se movieran a su presentación. Así que con eso, iremos al comentario público. Nagin, ¿cuántos han registrado? Tenemos cinco personas registradas para el comentario público. Cuando se llama tu nombre, por favor, ven al micrófono. Tienes dos minutos para abordar el elemento en la agenda, y por supuesto, esa es la presentación sobre las mujeres y niños perdidas. Y por favor, antes de empezar, state tu nombre, y por favor, ten en cuenta el tiempo. Odio ser la persona que te diga cuando tu tiempo se acaba. Con eso, Nagin, adelante y llama los nombres.
Primero tenemos a Margaret Richard, y luego Anitra Freeman.
Sí, buen día a todos. ¿Está esto en? En nombre de mí y de otras personas nativas, considero yo mismo negra, mujer nativa negra. Y creo que es, sí, es malo ver algo así. Justo como es malo ver huesos negros en el océano Atlántico. Y soy de aquí, así que si me miras como, ¿de dónde eres? Yo nací aquí, en Seattle, Washington. Así que es muy importante, y sí, y soy mujer. Sí, y eso es importante, que las mujeres continúan continuamente, y las chicas, hablen por lo que les da daño. Porque el padre no puede hablar. Así que mientras esté ahí, voy a hablar de lo que me ha pasado. Y tienes a la Junta de Salud Indian en programa, y yo fui discriminada en la Junta de Salud Indian. Y dices, oh, pero la reina Pearl, eres una nativa. No les hicieron eso a ti. El cáncer es murderous, y si no lo matas, se propagará. Y por eso dije, mira esto, estaba en la página de antes diciendo que estaban perdidos, pero nosotros también nos fuimos a perder. Y tengo sangre nativa en mí, realmente no sé mucho sobre eso, y cuánto, pero aún así, es un problema. Así que espero que puedas arreglar tu problema, igual que las personas negras todavía están tratando de arreglar su problema sobre cómo vienen perdidas y muertas, y tratan de ser indiferentes solo debido al color de su piel. Todavía estoy luchando, soy un guerrero. Vine aquí como un guerrero, y me moriré uno, ¿vale? Y así espero, como dije, que obtengas todo lo que te pido con este descubrimiento sobre por qué estas chicas y estas mujeres vienen perdidas como son. Tengan un buen día.
Gracias, siguiente.
Anitra Freeman, y luego Linda Soriano.
Sí, mi nombre es Anitra Freeman, y estoy de acuerdo con las mujeres y negras real, siempre que alguien sin hogar muere fuera, o por violencia en King County. Y hemos estado por las mujeres nativas americanas, incluyendo a Davina Garrison, quien fue asesinada en 2005, y su asesinato sigue siendo desproblema. Muchas gracias por hacer esta estudio. También queremos justicia para estas mujeres. Queremos justicia para Sandra Smithkin, para Davina Garrison, y para otras que ni siquiera sabemos qué les ha pasado. Gracias.
Gracias. Quiero recordar que la membresía Bagshaw nos ha acompañado, gracias. Hola Linda.
Mi nombre es Linda Soriano, estoy enrollada con la gran eliminación aquí en el estado de Washington. En primer lugar, solo quiero agradecer a todos los que tienen interés en esto, y que incluso tomas el tiempo para dar atención a las mujeres y niños perdidas indígenas. Cuando comenzó a ir global en Canadá, se está volviendo mucho más consciente. Tengo una amiga muy cercana que está preocupada, así que fui y hice mi propia investigación. Sí, tenemos un alto número de mujeres y niños perdidas y asesinadas indígenas, pero, sin embargo, los hombres y los chicos tienen el doble de probabilidad de ser perdidos y asesinados. Y eso es aquí en los Estados Unidos y en Canadá. Ahora, cuando llegué aquí hoy, pedí al asistente aquí que ponga uno de estos en frente de cada uno de ustedes. Y la razón por la que lo hice es para señalar que justo antes de estar aquí hoy, estábamos sentados silenciosamente a lo largo de la calle para otra muerte sin hogar. Lo que quiero señalar es, a lo largo de los años, cuántos han sido hallados asesinados, o cualquier causa de su muerte. En mi corazón, sé de mi propia experiencia, un alto número de esas muertes sin hogar son nativas americanas. Sé por hecho, he estado haciendo mi búsqueda de calle, sin patrocinio, solo, desde 1999. Mi esposo y yo nos casamos en 2012, ahora es nuestro ministerio de matrimonio. A menudo encontramos a personas que están sufriendo allá afuera. Así que es por eso, aunque no sé a muchos de los que estamos sentados silenciosamente a lo largo de la calle, es importante reconocer esas muertes. Las mujeres y niños perdidas indígenas, simplemente se rompe mi corazón, porque tantas de ellas todavía están perdidas. Todavía están perdidas, y los hombres y los chicos a lo largo del país, Estados Unidos y Canadá. Gracias.
Gracias Linda.
Tenemos a Randy Peters, y luego Joey Gray.
Oh, sí. Mi nombre es Snoopskebu, y es mi ancestro. Desde el comienzo de contacto, hemos estado teniendo este problema de mujeres perdidas, niños perdidos, y ahora son chicos. Y si no podemos traer la atención a este tema, le pedimos, por favor, necesitamos tu ayuda. Necesitamos sacar esto en el aire, para que pare. Porque tuve hermanas que fueron llevadas de arriba a California. Y ellos se acostumbraron al R C M P, así es como se fueron. Y todos los días, esto está sucediendo a familias, donde perdimos a nuestros amigos. Y necesitamos tu ayuda. Nos disculpa con ustedes, necesitamos su ayuda. Porque hay demasiada tristeza, demasiada dolor. Generalmente, mucha gente no trae esto a la atención, que simplemente lo esconden en sus corazones. Y la gente está herida, las familias están heridas, a lo largo del país. Así que disculpa con ustedes. Gracias por escuchar.
Gracias, gracias por tus palabras. Nagin, oh, ¿puedes...? Hola Joey.
Hola, soy Joey Gray. Muchas gracias por traer esta cuestión importante a este cuerpo y a la ciudad de Seattle. Mi nombre es Joey Gray, soy Okanagan y Métis. Mi familia ha estado en Seattle desde los 2000, aquí como invitada en la tierra costera. Y mi tía me dio esta carta de 2001, recientemente, que no había oído hablar hasta entonces. Y es de mi tío a mi papá. Su familia era de los Okanagan, y voy a leerla, esta es mi testimonio. Esta señora que mi tío conocía, ahora en sus setenta años, era la hija de una Lula Bovet, la más joven de nuestro clan, y la que su mamá, mi mamá, a veces se refería a desear y tristemente, que fue a Los Ángeles, presumiblemente en los 1930, luego a San Diego, y desapareció de vista. Supongo que tenía esta hija que fue enviada a nuestro abuelo en Kelowna, quien la crió. Y ella desapareció, nadie descubrió por qué o cómo. Y su tía ciertamente recuerda esa madre. Y su mamá, o su mamá, hablaba con los mismos tonos que nuestra mamá, mi mamá, sobre la hermana perdida. No sé si había algún indicio de escándalo o no en este asunto. Así que esto fue en 2001, que se hablaba de esto en nuestra familia de esa manera. Y ha estado pasando, como otras testimonias dicen, desde el contacto. Así que gracias de nuevo por levantar este tema, por traer los temas más desconcertantes a la luz pública y lidiar con él.
Gracias Joey. ¿Estamos listos? ¿Hay alguien más que necesita hablar antes de cerrar el comentario público? Bien, con eso, cerraremos el comentario público y pasaremos a la agenda. ¿Puedo que lea el registro, y luego daremos a nuestros amigos que vayan y tengan un lugar aquí? Adelante Nagin, ¿no quieres leer primero el registro?
Item de la agenda uno, mujeres y niños perdidas.
Madam presidenta, solo quiero agradecerte por la invitación a asistir, y solo quiero decirte que tendré que ir un poco temprano, así que disculpo si me levanto en el medio de la presentación.
Bien.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias por estar aquí. Voy a hacer algo un poco diferente de lo que normalmente hago. Voy a preguntar a nuestros presentadores si pueden decir brevemente quiénes son, y luego quiero hacer una declaración, y luego quiero pasarla a ustedes tres, que adelante. Erin, y lo siento, debería haber dicho tu nombre antes, y puedes decir quién es tu título. Porque quiero que te den el registro primero, y luego quiero poner algo de esto en contexto. Así que si puedo que te presentes, tu afiliación tribal, por supuesto. Y como sabes, mi nombre es Natui Mististaque, lo que significa mujer montana santa y pie de negro. Y como siempre bromeo, no obtuve mi nombre de internet. Hubo una ceremonia que fue junto con eso, tres días largas. Ofendí a mis amigos aquí hoy con el lugar más sagrado de nuestro lugar, Chief Mountain, y el Río Two Medicine. Así que con eso, si puedo que te presentes, y luego voy a hacer algunas declaraciones, y luego las devolveré.
Yate, a todos, mi nombre es Esther Lucero, soy de Latina y Latina, y soy la CEO de la Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle. Es un privilegio absoluto estar entre amigos cuando estoy sentada en una mesa de miembros del consejo, y somos todos familiares. Es maravilloso, gracias.
Hola, buenos días a todos. Noah, mi nombre es Abigail Echo Hawk, soy ciudadana contratada de la nación Ponni de Oklahoma, y también una orgullosa de la gente atahabaskan de la parte superior de la tribu de Mentasta, Alaska. Y es un privilegio y un honor estar aquí con mi amiga y querida, y la señora señora Juarez. Y de nuevo, gracias por esta oportunidad de poder compartir lo que está sucediendo en nuestras comunidades y ofrecer soluciones.
Waka'akwiana slamyo, mi nombre es Erin Spark. Soy el oficial de asuntos gubernamentales de la Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle, soy Chupik de Alaska Occidental. En mi idioma dije hola y gracias por permitirme hacer mi parte para nuestra comunidad. También soy padre de dos chicas nativas jóvenes, tienen siete y cuatro años, es por eso que tengo un poco de dificultad para hablar ahora. Normalmente no me emociono mucho, pero esto es algo que llega muy cerca de mi casa. Gracias por ser tal campeona de MMIG, la señora presidenta Juarez.
Gracias. Para aquellos de nosotros que nos criaron en un país indígena, antes de hacer mis comentarios, ha sido un poco diferente para mí hacer esta transición de lo que solía hacer a estar en el consejo de la ciudad, en nuestras reglas de orden de Roberts, y cómo hacemos las cosas. Pero me gustaría hacerlo de nuestra manera tradicional, que empezamos. No lo llamamos oración, pero hablamos de un momento en que pedimos al Creador que nos movamos hacia adelante de una buena manera, y tomamos decisiones y tenemos palabras buenas que vienen de un buen lugar. Y como siempre dijo el tío Billy, al final del día todos seremos sanados. Así que con eso, quiero hacer algunos comentarios, y si pueden soportarme, quiero poner esto en contexto sobre por qué estamos aquí hoy, pero permitiré que los expertos, por supuesto, realmente compartan con nosotros por qué estamos aquí hoy. La falta de mujeres y niños perdidas indígenas en un contexto más histórico y político y cultural es lo que quiero abordar. Y como estaba compartiendo con mis colegas antes de que los microfones se encendieran, la raíz de esto es sobre la colonización. Y la colonización es y fue más que solo el tomar de nuestra tierra y nuestros recursos. La colonización como política o ley gubernamental tomó nuestras vidas, nuestra salud, nuestra cultura, nuestro idioma, nuestra tierra, nuestros hijos, nuestro lugar espiritual y prácticas, incluso tomó nuestra pelo. La ironía de los nativos americanos siendo la minoría etica más regulada, ya que somos entidades políticas y naciones soberanas, que bajo tal escrutinio y intentos de eliminarnos, no hubo intentos colectivos de humanidad para encontrarnos, para protegernos, y para valorar nuestras vidas, y todavía estamos aquí hoy. Los contactos históricos con Estados Unidos y los pueblos indígenas de nosotros, nuestro país. No puedo hacer Federal Indian Law History 101, pero puedo compartir la historia que nos trae aquí hoy, hasta 2019. Quiero volver en el tiempo un poco más y poner en contexto sobre lo que nuestra gente, nuestros pueblos indígenas, toda América del Norte, han estado lidiando con. En 1783, el presidente George Washington, en sus primeros escritos, en su intento de comprar nuestra tierra antes de la guerra, antes del tiempo de tratados, después de, durante el genocidio y la terminación, nos vimos como "bestias salvajes". Somos salvajes, y "salvajes como el gato", tanto siendo bestias de pre, aunque diferencian en forma. En 1824 a 1849, los asuntos indígenas estaban en el departamento de la guerra. Nuestra génesis política en nuestro propio país comenzó en el departamento de la guerra, con la ocupación militar de nuestra tierra y nuestro pueblo. No fue hasta 1849 que el Departamento de Interior tomó control de lo que ellos llamaban el problema indígena y el problema indígena. Sin embargo, en los años 70 y 80, hubo una gran empujada congresional para poner a los indígenas "volver" al departamento de la guerra para más supervisión militar, ya que nos pusieron en reservas. 部分 de esta historia que tuve que retroceder fue muy dolorosa en los últimos cuatro días. Porque aunque estoy en el consejo de la ciudad, cuando practico derecho y represento tribus, sé muchos de estos hechos de la cabeza, y ha sido un tiempo desde que he visto a Pruka y US v. Washington y todos estos temas, y lo hice. Así que puedo decirte que estamos lidiando con más de 500 años de colonización, más de 300 años de relaciones tributales de Estados Unidos, y derecho federal indígena y jurisprudencia. Estamos lidiando con leyes que, la política era exterminarnos, leyes de genocidio y eliminación, reservas de terminación, y sabemos nuestra historia. Estos rumores coloniales corren profundo y están atrapados en el sangre de nuestro pueblo. Y eso no es solo hiperbólico, eso es verdadera historia. Una historia de sangre, guerra, genocidio y odio. Y no ha cambiado. Así que si avanzamos a 2019, estamos aquí hoy porque hay dos informes. Primero y antes, estamos muy orgullosos del informe que salió de la Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle y el trabajo de Abigail Echo Hawk y Esther Lucero y su equipo, que salió este verano, que habló de que Seattle tenía el número más alto de mujeres y niños perdidas indígenas. Y tenemos un segundo informe que salió el lunes, el informe canadiense, llamado "Reclamando el Poder y el Plazo". Ese es un documento de 1200 páginas, y esta es la cita. Reporte que culmina la violencia disproportionatelyatriz enfrentada por las mujeres indígenas por el colonialismo profundo y la acción estatal. Esos son 20 palabras muy poderosas. Quiero compartir brevemente algo con ustedes, y luego sé que Nagin había preparado un memo, y creo que está aquí, y voy a asegurarme de que mis colegas tengan una copia de él. El reciente memo "Reclamando el Poder y el Plazo", "Inquérito Nacional sobre las mujeres y niños perdidas y asesinadas indígenas", el informe canadiense comenzó en 2016 y fue finalizado justo este lunes en 2019 y fue liberado. Ese informe final es más de 1200 páginas. El resumen ejecutivo es 117 páginas solo. Hay muchos hechos relacionados con este informe, pero hay dos de ellos que quiero destacar. Uno sobre los pueblos aborigenos en Canadá, que cuentan con 4% de la población de Canadá, y sin embargo, en promedio sufren de las mayores tasas de crimen, pobreza y adicción. De nuevo, las causas raíces, y esta es la cita, "persistente y patrón deliberado de sistemáticas de violaciones de derechos y generaciones raciales y indígenas y abusos perpetuados históricamente y mantenidos hoy por el estado canadiense diseñado para desplazar a los pueblos indígenas de sus tierras, estructuras sociales y gobiernos, y para erradicar su existencia como naciones, comunidades, familias y individuos". Y eso es del jefe comisionado, jefe comisionado Biller en el informe. Hay principios básicos clave en este informe y su llamada a la justicia. Es reafirmar los derechos básicos humanos, ver la política y reformas legales importantes, tener servicios de trauma informados, y tener un foco regional con atención a las comunidades norteñas y remotas. Y finalmente, el reconocimiento de la cultura y el idioma de las tribus en toda la nación, y las identidades dentro de esas tribus. Ahora, sin ir a los cuatro o quince áreas de su llamada a la justicia, creo que es importante notar que destacaron los derechos humanos e indígenas y las obligaciones del gobierno, cultura, bienestar, seguridad humana y justicia. Y de eso, no quiero entrar en todos los quince, porque voy a ser un poco demasiado tonto, pero es importante que este informe coincide con tu presentación, porque mucho de ello es lo mismo, y creo que lo hicieron bien. Y lo que realmente me gusta de él, no era solo sobre información. El gobierno hará un proceso deliberado para abordar por qué tienen tantas mujeres y niños perdidas indígenas, y nadie hizo nada al respecto. Mi comprensión es que entrevistaron más de 2380 miembros de familia que eran sobrevivientes de la violencia, y expertos y conocedores. Y pasaron por el país para recoger esta evidencia, algo que nuestro país aún no ha hecho. Así que ambos informes deben ser leídos, como compartí, de nuevo, dentro del contexto violento y histórico del colonialismo. El colonialismo para mí, según lo que entiendo, es más que solo este nuevo término cuando la gente habla de decolonizando. Para nosotros, significa trauma, trauma histórico, que se manifiesta a través de muchas, muchas generaciones. Y sé que Abigail y Esther y Erin hablarán más inteligentemente, más articuladamente que yo. Pero quiero terminar con una analogía simple, que es compleja y dolorosa sobre la condición humana del trauma. El trauma histórico es como un río inundado, como cuando un río se inundan y rompen sus bancos. El agua, como el dolor, no puede contenerse más, y ese dolor, como ese agua, tiene que ir a algún lugar. Ese dolor tiene que calmar y estar en algún lugar. Y creo que por qué estamos aquí hoy, es que estamos aquí para discutir ese dolor en la historia y el trauma, el trauma histórico, y lo que haremos sobre eso. Este es solo el comienzo, y estoy feliz de que tenga a mis colegas aquí hoy, porque estas son las personas, estas son las mujeres, que van a trabajar con ustedes y todos nosotros, de cómo vamos a abordar esto, qué vamos a hacer, qué legislación vamos a pasar para proteger a nuestras mujeres. Es triste decir que Seattle tiene el número más alto de mujeres y niños perdidas y asesinadas indígenas en el país. No es un hecho que estemos orgullosos, pero te aseguro en mi palabra hoy, que es algo que vamos a arreglar. Y así, con eso, lo paso a los expertos en este área, y quiero agradecerte de nuevo.
Gracias, presidenta Juarez. De nuevo, es interesante, porque a menudo estamos en foros como este, y venimos con nuestros vestidos, y venimos aquí con nuestros rostros fuertes, ¿verdad? Y luego nos golpes con la abertura de una buena manera, como personas nativas. Y lo que pasa cuando lo haces es que tenemos que venir como toda la gente. Y eso significa que llevamos emociones un poco. Y no me sorprende que Erin expresara eso, y puede que veas eso de todos nosotros, porque todos hemos sido afectados por este problema, este desafío, en muchos sentidos. Así que gracias por eso. También me gustaría decir que aprecio que hagas espacio para todos nosotros aquí. La Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle ha pasado por una transformación tremenda, y hacemos todo como equipo. Y dependo de la experiencia de mis miembros de equipo para llevar este mensaje hacia adelante y de los demás. Déjame decir algo sobre la Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle por un momento. La Junta de Salud Indian de Seattle nació de movimientos de justicia social de finales de los 1960s y principios de los 1970s. Somos una organización de servicio que está comprometida con nuestras comunidades. Probablemente seamos más conocidos por nuestra atención a la salud y los servicios humanos, porque somos un programa de salud indígena urbano, así que nuestra autoridad está en la Ley de Aceleración de la Salud Indian, y es permanentemente reautorizada por la ACA. Digo eso porque la gente no está familiarizada con el hecho de que tenemos un legado de defensa, y que hospedamos el Instituto de Salud Urbano Indian, que es uno de doce epicentros tributales en la nación, y el único que tiene un alcance nacional, porque servimos los programas urbanos en todo el país. Me gustaría recordar a los que 71% de los indígenas y nativos alascasianos viven en entornos urbanos. Y fuimos uno de esos centros de relocation principales. Y así, lo que vamos a compartir con ustedes hoy es una extensión de trabajo que originó con movimientos de base, ¿verdad?, que comenzó en los 1930. Y así, nosotros como organización, porque estamos comprometidos con nuestra gente y nuestra comunidad, y nos centramos en cultura y medicina tradicional indígena, estamos llegando hoy a ofrecer nuestros dones a este movimiento. Y esos dones están fundados en la investigación, y están fundados en la comprensión de cómo funciona la política y la defensa. Y es por eso que estamos en esta mesa. Pero eso no es para sobreocultar los muchos marchas que han ocurrido, o las muchas voces que han sido llevadas por nuestras familias que han experimentado esto recientemente y incluso en el pasado. Así que con eso, solo quiero darle a los expertos en nuestra organización, que dependemos para campeónizar esta obra para nosotros.
Así que de nuevo, buenos días a todos, y gracias Esther mucho. Como dijo, somos un equipo, y tenerla liderando esta organización ha sido integral en ser capaz de hacer investigación y recolección de datos de una buena manera. Así que cuando hablamos de datos de decolonización, que están en la pantalla, la gente me pregunta a menudo, ¿qué significa eso? Y pienso en mí mismo, no como una investigadora de un modelo académico occidental, pero prefiero verse como una historiadora. Y la historia en nuestras comunidades siempre ha sido parte de quién somos, y de hecho, en la mayoría de las comunidades siempre ha sido parte de quién somos. Pero cuando entramos en la ciencia occidental, hay a menudo esta idea de que nuestras historias son sin sentido a menos que tengamos los números. Y muy a menudo cuando miramos a las poblaciones marginadas, indígenas estadounidenses, nativos alascasianos, hispanicos y latinos... Hispanic Latinos, and many others, we, in this Western system of colonialism, are very often not given the opportunity to gather our own numbers, to tell our own stories. So when I talk about decolonizing data and the work that we have done in violence against Indigenous women and girls, is that it is the reclamation of our traditional ways of gathering information, numbers, and stories, and using them to move the health and well-being of our people and of our community. And we are doing it for Indigenous people, by Indigenous people, and we will be the ones shaping not only the stories, but the solutions. And I think that is why we're here today, is we're going to share with you stories that are hard to hear. Stories that families have shared with me, numbers that maybe you have never seen before, but because of the silencing of them through the Western research and through the non-gathering of our stories, because it justifies the taking of our land, the killing of our people, and the bloody genocide in which our organizations, in which our bureaucracies, in which our homes currently are. Instead, we are going to reclaim our strength and our power, and being here at this table today is part of that. So you're part of our decolonizing data. So welcome to a journey, because it is that, because it requires us to think differently and to make different choices in recognition of the things that Councilwoman just read, because it is an ongoing genocide against our people as we look at our women and girls who are missing and who have been murdered. I just want to start with a little bit of background, and this is from national data that shows that Native women are two times more likely to be raped or a victim of sexual assault than the rest of the country. So we're looking at all of the racial and ethnic groups. Why are Native women more likely to be raped or to be victims of sexual assault? This is a question that many people have never actually addressed. And when I look at this data, in my heart, I knew, and from the stories that I have been told nationwide—I've done research with more than 150 different tribal communities across the United States, both in urban and rural settings—is that I know our stories tell that this isn't even near the number of actually—of those of us who have experienced sexual assault or have been raped. I identify as a woman who has been a victim of rape and sexual assault, and I know that I am not the only one. When I first started the Seattle Indian Health Board about two and a half years ago, one of the first things that we moved to do was to release a study that had been done specifically with American Indian and Alaska Native women living in the city of Seattle. And this is the results of those studies. This was the beginning of a series that we titled "Our Bodies, Our Stories." In this study, we found that more than—148 Native women that we talked to, 94% of them had been sexually assaulted in their lifetime. These are Native women that were living in the city of Seattle. When you look at this graphic—again, this is part of our decolonizing data—is that —for there's a reason that we use this imagery very specifically. This woman is wearing a type of Native regalia called a ribbon skirt. And what we wanted to represent is that this data, these stories, these beautiful voices who shared this information with us, that even though they have had these ribbons of trauma, they are held within prayer, and they are held within the hands of their community and those allies who have a responsibility to ensure that this trauma does not continue. I'm just gonna go briefly over the findings of this study. We talked to 148 Native women living in the city of Seattle, and as I said, 94% of them had been sexually assaulted in their lifetime. Now, this data is more than has been seen in any other city, although I will say very few have actually done this kind of research. It is more than what the national averages are, and it's more than is reported in King County Health. This data was something that had never been seen before. Why were they willing to tell us? It's because it was done by Indigenous people for Indigenous people. We sat, and those who did those interviews, as these women shared up to four hours sitting down, crying and weeping, and sharing their stories, and why did they do it? Why would you relive that kind of trauma? They did it because they wanted their stories to make a difference here in this city. They did not want those next generations, their daughters, their granddaughters, their great-granddaughters, to experience the same kind of trauma that they had. Because the trauma that they experienced are things that you at this table deal with every day as you make your policy and programming decisions here for the city. We found that 42% of the women who were in this study had attempted suicide in their lifetime. We found that 53% of them lacked permanent housing. What if we changed the dialogue on homelessness and those who do not currently have houses over their heads that they—or couches to sleep on, or even safe spaces on the street? What if we changed that to think about it from a narrative of, these are individuals who have experienced extreme trauma, and as a result of that trauma, they work to just survive? So when I think about 34% of them in this study had also experienced binge drinking, approximately 32% of them were also using illicit drugs, primarily opiates, they're treating their trauma. They're treating their trauma that nobody else even acknowledged existed. Because when we looked at those numbers of those who reported it to the police, only 8% of the cases that were reported actually saw conviction of the perpetrator. And when we looked at the data of those who were assaulted over the age of 18, the primary race of those that were assaulting them were white men. This is a problem in the city of Seattle. Our women are being assaulted, and they're not reporting. Why aren't they reporting? Lack of trust within the system, and we see that in the results of only 8% of them actually seeing a conviction within this King County court system. Why would they report? What we did find is those who did tell someone about their assault, that the primary person they were talking to were family and friends. And we know this to be true amongst all women who experience sexual violence, is that the primary person they talked to is family and friends. How are we in this county preparing family and friends to talk with their loved ones who have been victims of sexual assault? And do you think some mainstream organization, when approached by American Indian, Alaska Native communities, are they prepared to talk about the ongoing trauma, the results of colonization? And when we look at the 148 Native women, 86% of them indicated that they experience or have been affected by historical trauma. So I'm gonna define historical trauma for you. It is defined as a cumulative, massive impact on a population, just not one generation, but ongoing. So the things that my great-grandmother experienced are currently affecting me. So we asked them questions like, do you feel a loss of land? I don't know how many of you at this table wake up every morning and feel a loss of the land of your people, but I do. And I know that is unique to American Indian and Alaska Native people. We asked them questions like, did you or a member of your immediate family where you removed and put into the boarding school system? And we know, particularly in this area of Washington State and across the country, that there was a time in this government's history where they took our Native children not because our families could not provide for them. And in fact, they took them because our families were providing too much for them. They were providing too much love and support and culture and connection to family, to tribe, to land, to people. They took them because that connection in the government's eyes could not continue, because they needed, as they said—this was actually a motto from the individual who first started these boarding schools, by the name of Richard Pratt. His motto was "Kill the Indian and Save the Man." And the intention of these schools—which the last ones didn't shut down until the late 1990s—was to take our culture, to cut our hair, to remove our language, and to disconnect us from each other and from our culture with the intention of assimilating us into mainstream society where we would just be molded into the perfect white man. They weren't even trying to mold us into the perfect white woman. 86% of these women who participated in this study have been affected by historical trauma. And when we think about the need to invest in and to ensure that our culturally attuned care, such as the Seattle Indian Health Board and other organizations like the Chief Seattle Club, United Indians of All Tribes, Nahha Ili, and I could just keep naming the names, is that we are the ones who know how to serve our people. We know, because we've experienced this exact kind of colonialism. I've experienced this exact kind of sexual violence. And in fact, the sexual violence that was perpetrated against me, which happened in Alaska, as a result of the barriers of what exists between the federal government and tribal lands, I never saw what anybody would see as justice, because nobody cared about a little Indian girl that had been repeatedly raped. And I knew it, and my family knew it. And to this day, my community knows it, because I am just one of a very few stories. This was on the front page of the Seattle Times in August of 2018, and after that, I was inundated on every social media platform that I have, and including my email address—I'm not sure how everybody got that—with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds—I cannot even tell you the number of messages—from Native women across the country, who all told me their stories of sexual assault. What was really surprising to me was this line down in the bottom, in almost every single one, and they said, "I just wanted to tell somebody who would understand." We all want to tell somebody who will understand. Why hasn't anybody been listening? And we know that we live in a culture that blames us for our sexual assaults, that judges what clothes we wore, what street we were on, what we did for work. I am here to tell you that me being Native is not a risk factor. I'm not at risk because I'm Native. I'm not trying to beat the odds, and I don't want my children and my nieces to have to beat the odds and not be that next woman who is raped. Why aren't we changing the odds? We need to look beyond the individual symptoms, and what is the larger underlying issue that is allowing for this kind of violence to continue? And in this city, we have an epidemic of sexual violence. How are we going to address this? How are we going to ensure that these voices, these stories are honored? I did a lot of interviews during this time when we released this report, and I had one reporter specifically who—in this Seattle Times article, my sister Colleen Echolock, who's the executive director of the Chief Seattle Club, one of the things she's quoted in that article and saying is that, at the very least, they have one rape a week reported at the Chief Seattle Club. Every week, and we're saying at least one. So many weeks, there are more. I was surprised by the lack of outcry from this community as a whole when we saw on the front page of Seattle Times that there is at least one rape a week in just one organization being reported. And I shared this with that reporter, and I thought, you know, I go to LA Fitness. I pay my $20, I got it a discount for a year, you know? What if at my LA Fitness, which is in Seattle, what if that staff was hearing, once a week, at least one of their members, at least one of them was raped every single week before coming to LA Fitness? The news crews would be there, the police would be there, there would be a big public outcry. I was sharing this with this reporter, and she looked at me, and she told me, she said, "Oh, well, you know, I don't think you can make that comparison, because at LA Fitness, they pay." And I sat there, and we talk about personally impacting—I had just told her I was a victim of sexual violence. And when we think about the callousness that we experience as women, as women of color, and as even more marginalized American Indians and Alaska natives who are homeless and being sexually assaulted on land where 1,000 years ago, that never would have happened. But yet, it went back to the economics of it, because I paid $20 at LA Fitness, so, you know, you're worthy not to be raped. But all those homeless women who every day go into the Chief Seattle Club to go to the bathroom and take a shower and to contact their relatives, to see our nurse from the Seattle Indian Health Board, to get that meal, they deserve to walk into that organization every single day and not have been raped 24 hours before. The conversation in this city has to change, and that's just my interactions with media. This has been something since the release of this report that I have been quite surprised by, and the work that I've done, is that I have actually gotten more compassion when I talk about heart disease than when I talk about sexual violence. One of the things that we've seen, and I know that there are members of the council who sit on this, is the King County Council has recently created a subgroup for the Board of Health that is specifically addressing missing and murdered Indigenous women and sexual violence, and I am one of the co-chairs of that. Because we are specifically going to take this on. It is a direct result of institutional and structural and individual-level racism that makes sexual violence against Indigenous women and other women of color, in a sense, okay. Because if you're not prosecuting it, if you're not addressing it, if you are not mobilizing community for it, you are complicit in the sexual violence that continues. So I am very thankful to see the King County Board of Health take this on as an issue over the next year, and expect to see some things come out of that. We have an incredible group of people. It has to be done, and we have to shift and change this narrative. Very often, people keep asking me, well, what does this report, the first one you did, have to do with missing and murdered Indigenous women? The reason we started this, and this was the first of our series, and the second report was our missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, is that we wanted to look at one city. What is happening and how are Native women being affected by violence there? And if we can be sexually assaulted in the streets, if we can never see justice within the King County justice systems, if we've been affected by historical trauma, and that is ongoing and continuing, if we can see these behavioral health issues as a result of this trauma, what else is happening? It was then that we released the next report in November of 2018. And I want to start with a statistic from the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, that murder is a third-leading cause of death among American Indian, Alaska Native women. I actually think personally—I believe this statistic is wrong, and I'll tell you why. The data isn't being captured. For what data there is currently available, we know that murder is a third-leading cause of death—for all American Indian and Alaska Native women. I believe personally that it's number one. But because nobody's gathering the information, nobody really knows, except for our communities. Because this ongoing violence didn't start again 10 years ago, it started 500 years ago. And I can tell you historical stories to stories from two weeks ago that are so parallel in what's happened, that it is incredible that it is still continuing, in my eyes. We have an epidemic of murder, and we have an epidemic of our women going missing. And the sexual violence report, as we showed, it's so invisible. Nobody's listened, and up until this point, very few people have even cared outside of our community. Our report was titled "Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls." It's available on our website, uihi.org. I believe all of you have a copy of it. And we did this report for one reason and one reason only. Our women's voices deserve to be heard. This report was led by Anita Lukesi, who was working with us at that time as a fellow, and she had been doing incredible work both in the United States and Canada, and had created the only database of missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls in North America. The only one, and it was done by that time—she's a doctoral student—by a doctoral student who wasn't getting paid. At that time, I reached out to her because I wanted us to be able to support her work. And again, we had been hearing cries from across our community that missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls was happening. And in fact, over my years in working with tribal leadership and sitting in on listening sessions between the Department of Justice, different agencies at the federal government, I would see tribal leader after tribal leader get up and say, "Our women are going missing and are being murdered. What are you going to do about it? Why are you not working with us? Why haven't we seen any information? Why isn't this being acknowledged?" And what are the answers that they heard? "Oh, you know, it's gonna cost us too much money. We'd need allocations from Congress in order to do a really good look." You have one or two or three stories, but the data shows us that it's actually not a problem, because in our data, it doesn't say that there's very many who have gone missing or murdered. We heard tribal leadership being told, "It's your problem, it's happening on your reservations. This is an issue of your people." Year after year, decade after decade, our tribal leadership has called for something to be done. With the work that Anita was doing, we had the opportunity, as the Urban Indian Health Institute—and again, I am so thankful for the support of our CEO, Esther Lucero, the entire executive leadership team, and our board—who supported us in saying, you know what? Now is the time. We're not gonna wait anymore. I'm not waiting for money from the federal government. We are going to take the steps ourselves. So we started this project 100% unfunded, and we ended this project 100% unfunded. And in fact, the $20,000 that paid for this, what is being called a groundbreaking report that has been used to shape federal legislation, and legislation in more than 16 states across the United States, was actually fees that my team and I charge for— for whether it be speaking or our services here and there. That's how we paid for it. We didn't need an allocation of Congress. Because again, the indications are, they didn't do it because the money wasn't there. They didn't do it because they didn't care, nor were they going to be held accountable for not caring. So they just didn't do it. We decided we would do it in partnership with Anita. And what we found is we submitted public records requests to 71 cities across the United States, 70, I'm sorry. And then the 71st one was to the state of Alaska as a whole because we recognize that Alaska has, from what we estimate, some of the highest numbers. And if, when we get the data that we're looking for, it is possible that Alaska will be the epicenter of missing and murdered Indigenous women in North America. And so we also got data for, we're looking for data from the state of Alaska. We submitted public records requests, federal requests, including to Seattle and to other states, or other cities here, including Tacoma and Spokane, and also in these other cities. We, these cities that we identify to get asked all the time, "Why didn't you do every city in the United States?", we were unfunded. And these are cities in which we provide technical assistance and other services to as the Urban Indian Health Institute. We know in these areas, there are high populations of urban-dwelling American Indians and Alaska natives. And what we found is, what I wanted to be able to do originally was to establish a baseline to say, "Hey, this is what's happening nationally in these cities" once we received the data. Over the course of the year, what we realized is that I can't tell you what's happening nationally because the data is so bad. And in fact, the 506 cases that we found of missing and murdered Indigenous women across the country is such a gross undercount, I can't even estimate on how bad those numbers are in terms of not truly representing. Are these numbers true? 100%. Are they an undercount? Yes. Personally, I think it's triple, quadruple, if not more, that we were unable to capture. And in fact, when we look at the numbers that we found, we had 128 were cases of missing Indigenous women. 280 were cases of murdered Native women and 98 were in an unknown status. And that means we weren't quite able to tell what had happened with those specific cases at this time. However, when we got this information, what we experienced was what our people always experienced when working within bureaucracies and governments. We were stopped by people who simply did not respond to our public records requests, which puts them out of federal compliance. They did not comply with public records requests at all. We had other ones who did comply, however, they wanted to charge us a bunch of money in order to access the data. If I had had $4,000 more, I would have had data from six more cities. I didn't have $4,000 more. So the data and that it should be public information was not accessible as a result of the fees that were charged in order for us to access that data. We came across police departments who said, "You know what? We can't actually differentiate because we don't capture the race and ethnicity of American Indians and Alaska natives." And in fact, we found one city like that in Santa Fe, New Mexico. The primary populations of minority populations there are Hispanic and Latino and American Indian, Alaska Native. And they're not capturing the race or ethnicity. Why would they not do that? That is when, again, we talk about the institutional and structural racism that exists. If you are not accounting for the data, if you're not capturing that information, you are able to effectively hide it and you are not held accountable to it. In addition, there were other cities where they were actually defaulting in their data to white if American Indian or Alaska Native was not captured. Race is not a default. I'm not sure what kind of programmer or what city made that decision or why they made that decision. It's in our report if you want to look at the cities, but Fargo, North Dakota is one of them. Right next to major tribal populations. When we look at white as a default, as that is the whitewashing of America, that again, you hide what is happening. And to me, it is an absolute illustration of why and how white supremacy is still playing out in our communities. Because we are not defaulted into white. We should never be defaulted into white. But yet, it is happening across this country. Another example of how and why we have to address the systems and the structures in order to break down these barriers. We also found that not everybody was entering in race and ethnicity and their law enforcement officers weren't being held accountable to ensuring they're capturing race and ethnicity. I know you've all seen, I know they're in like Walmart and other places, we get these Amber Alerts on our phones. And one of the descriptors are the race and ethnicity of individuals who have gone missing. Why are they not giving that same descriptor for everybody? How do we find our people when we don't even know from whom they come? And yet, we know it's happening. The invisible 153 in our report was 153 cases that were not accounted for in the public records requests and the data that these police departments sent to us. This number is shocking, 153. So where did we find these? From the families. From the community. From social media where they had put up a missing persons notice when the police wouldn't take it because they said, "Oh, your daughter runs away." You know, wait for a week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. Maybe we'll take it then. They're from murders that have remained cold cases that nobody has ever bothered to look at again. And in fact, many of the police didn't have in their, in their systems. The invisible 153 are a number of Native women who are racially misclassified within the data that we knew were Native but didn't come from police departments like the Seattle Police Department. And I'll tell you of one case of that specifically in a minute. But yet, these stories are here. And we honor them despite them not being in that data. We honor them as those communities, as those loved ones, as a hurt and a loss to their community. For mothers who weep for them, who, children who cry for them. They deserve to be represented in more data. They deserve to be represented by those who have been entrusted to protect and to serve them. Top 10 cities with highest number of missing and murdered Indigenous women. Again, we did not get information from all of the cities. And I know that many of those cities' information is wrong. However, I will tell you that when we look at the high number, 45 for Seattle, we know that those 45 are missing or murdered in Seattle. The number we actually received when we got our data back from the Seattle Police Department was 33. And I know that they probably see that there is a discrepancy there. And there absolutely is a discrepancy there. We do know that some of the data that we did not receive is a direct result of racial misclassification. And the fact that they are listed as white women within the data or they're listed as other races. But we know that they are American Indian or Alaska Native. I also know as a result of that racial misclassification that Seattle has more than 45. Absolutely has more than 45. And in fact, every one of these cities listed have more. Again, this is absolutely a gross undercount. We have to look at, also listed on here is Tacoma, Washington. And we know that many of our people are going back and forth and that some of us live and work in many different places. Me being Native should not be a risk factor in a city that I'm in. I shouldn't be more at risk because I'm Native. How are we going to be not saying, "Beat the odds," but rather change them? Washington State ranked number two in the top 10 states with the highest number of missing and murdered Indigenous women cases. When we look at this, we do know that we have seen some state-level legislation that has passed in the last two sessions led by Representative Mossberger and have seen incredible leadership from the tribal communities, both urban and rural, meeting with the state of Washington and pushing for accountability in the fact that we are number two for missing and murdered Indigenous women. However, those efforts, and we saw a report released on Friday from the Washington State Patrol as a result of that very first, in fact, it's on the front page of Seattle Times today, for that first legislation that was passed. This is a picture that came from the Seattle Times in an article that was done on Nicole Westbrook. And the reason I want to tell you this story is because it was detailed in the Seattle Times in multiple different articles and speaks to the issues that we're experiencing as Indigenous people who are calling for justice. Nicole Westbrook was killed in 2012 in Pioneer Square. She was shot while coming back from an event with her boyfriend. She had only lived here for a couple of weeks. And she had come here, according to the article, her family shared, that she had come here to Seattle, go to culinary school. She was enrolled, they had already bought her all of the supplies. And she had come here to make a better life for her family, for her children, for her community. She'd only been here a couple of weeks when she was the victim of random gun violence in downtown Seattle. When this happened, there was lots of articles that were done, not only in Seattle Times, but multiple other outlets, news stories done, police interviewed. Her family came from the Navajo Nation. She was a Denai woman and she was so loved. And I read this one article that the Seattle Times had written. And in it, her mother talks about how, you know, she wasn't killed immediately. They actually were able to take her to Harborview where she was alive and there for her family to come and say goodbye before she died. And in that article, her mother talks about how she washed and braided her hair. And I think about that. As a Native woman who understands what that means. And in fact, one of the most amazing memories I have of my sons is braiding their hair. Because for many of our communities, our hair holds a many different meaning. And as mothers, we care for our children in that way. And I know as a Pawnee woman, it is my responsibility to take care of my children. And I remember sitting down and parting my son's hair and taking those three pieces and telling him who he is and whispering those prayers and singing those songs as I braided his hair and I told him who he was. And I think about that mother who did this for her daughter, Nicole Westbrook. She braided her hair. And then she buried her daughter. Nicole is one of the ones that we did name in the report. We did not name very many, except for those that had received large media outlet. We did not want to cause any harm to the family or to the cases. And when our report came out in November of 2018, a reporter from the Seattle Times spoke to a sergeant at the Seattle Police Department and asked them to verify some of the cases. This was one of them. When that sergeant pulled her up in that data, and again, her family came from the Navajo Nation, articles everywhere talking about her being an Indigenous person, it talked to the Native people who stood and held her in memorial in Pioneer Square and sang those songs and recognized that she fell on Indigenous land. In the data from the Seattle Police Department, she's listed as a white woman. And in fact, I had actually hoped after that article came out that I'd hear from SPD because I don't know if that's been corrected. Is she still held in the wrong story? Is she listed as a white woman in SPD data today? I don't know. But I think it's likely that she is. The Washington State Patrol, for the first piece of that legislation that was supposed to happen statewide with Washington State, the intention of that legislation was to establish what is the problem, to hold community meetings and to conduct a data analyses on missing Native women in Washington State. I participated in it, went to several meetings, as did many of my team. And I listened again to tribal leaders tell stories, demand justice. This report came out on Friday. And I managed to find a copy of it. It's really buried in the Washington State Patrol. It's actually difficult to find the actual report itself. But we are seeing lots of news reports where people are, you know, applauding in a sense and patting the state on its back and saying, "Oh, you've pulled out the data that says there are 56 Native women missing in Washington State." A majority of them from Yakima and from King County were the highest numbers. What that report does not say is that there is rampant misclassification and that number again is a gross undercount. The report itself is basically meeting notes from 10 community meetings with no meaningful analysis done. Again, as a storyteller or as, you know, trained in both Western and Indigenous methodologies of conducting analyses and studies, this is not a study. This is publishing meeting notes from 10 community meetings where our community did share what needs to be done. The recommendations that are made, they are to begin collaborations with tribal governments. Well, as and I'm sure Councilwoman Juarez can tell you, that's already a mandate through tribal treaty law, is to have meaningful government-to-government relationships and consultations with tribal entities. Basically, the report tells us everything we already knew. I'm tired of getting handed the crumbs. This is not a checkbox. This is not a, "Oh, we went and listened." This is a time for action and I had expected to see some kind of action to be able to be taken from that report, and there is none. The only thing that has happened is legislation that's already passed. And that is to establish two liaisons, one in the western side of the state and one on the east. Two liaisons is not the answer. Two liaisons is a beginning. Where is the accountability to actually do a report that is meaningful? Data analyses is not saying there's 56. That is not an analysis. I always think about my accountability to my funders, whether they be private or federal, is I am held to a certain standard. I am going to hold the state of Washington to the same standard. They will be accountable to do more than to give me some meeting minutes and to say, "We'll give you two liaisons and we'll establish relationships." We have to do more. Now is the time for action. We are not a checkbox. I'm not going to be crumbs at the bottom of the table. If we allow this to be invisible again, we are all complicit in the violence against Indigenous women. And we will treat the symptoms, the homelessness, the substance misuse, the opiate crisis. But until we actually address the systems, that will not change. And here we see a family that mourns. A mother that braided her daughter's hair who wanted to keep braiding her daughter's hair. And that is all we want. It's for the lives of our community members to be valued. And we will sing for them, we will pray for them, and we will fight for them in all of our fierceness. Because when I think about Native women, we are generations who have survived in a time when we were supposed to be eliminated. If that genocide had worked, I would not be here. I am a tangible manifestation of my ancestors' resiliency. And we all are. Somebody asked me, "Well, how hard is it to see all these Native women who are victims?" And I will tell you, I am not a victim. We are fierce warriors who, when they wouldn't let us sing our songs, we whispered them. When they wouldn't let us stay in our land, we took handfuls of dirt and our seeds with us. We are fierce, we are strong, and we refuse to be complicit in the violence against us. The advocates, the grassroots, those who have marched, those who have stood memorial, those like Patsy Whitefoot of the Yakima Nation, of those other individuals who have fought for so long, we stand here on their shoulders in their footsteps because they have been fighting for this for many, many years. We did these reports not because my community needed to know. We did this report because you needed to know. We did this report so now nobody can ever say to us, "Well, you don't have the data." This is a tool. This is an arrow. This is us going to battle because we will not let this violence continue. I'm going to share one more story and then pass it on to my incredible team here. And it had to do with the data we received from the Seattle Police Department. So Anita received the first initial dataset. And then we got another one a couple of weeks later. And we're like, "What is going on? Why did we just get two completely different data sets from the Seattle Police Department?" Why did we just get two completely different datasets from the Seattle Police Department?" And that is because Representative from SPD told us, that the homicide unit found that "N" in the data, which is how they were sorting the data to identify whether or not they were Native American, that it was being used up until the early '80s by the Seattle Police Department, as both recognizing "N" for Negro in the data, and "N" for Native American. So they were effectively hiding what was happening to both African-American women and to Native American women. And in fact, from that data from the early '80s back, I can't tell you what was happening, because we don't know, we can't tell. And also, the word Negroed has not been used in modern data collection since the end of the Civil Rights Movement in the early 1970s. So again, as we look at the impact of institutional and structural racism in cities like Seattle, here's one of the ways it was playing out, is that why weren't we doing what, at that time, modern data collection would have been, to ensure that that word was not used and instead African-American was used? So these were some of the unique things that, this happened specifically in Seattle, I didn't hear that from any of the other cities. We have work to do. We have action to take. And in fact, as the Seattle Indian Health Board, we have been doing that. And we have been working at both the local, the county, as I talked about, the King County Board of Health, the state, and also on the federal level, to look at policy legislation, to ensure that we are working with our communities and getting the information that they need to ensure the safety of our women, our girls, because they are our matriarchs, they are our future. And so I'm going to pass this on to Erin Sparks, who can tell you a little bit about what's been going on with the policy and legislative piece.
Thank you, Abigail. So I do want to give a little piece of this, I'm going to skip around on the scale piece. I'm going to start at the state level. And right now, Abigail mentioned 16 states, the Missing and Murder Indigenous Women and Girls Movement, the epidemic or the movement to recognize it, has manifested itself in a lot of different ways. Unfortunately, a lot of them is not necessarily in a form of legislative teeth, where anything can actually happen, or money's been allocated. A lot of those are proclamations saying that Missing and Murder Indigenous Women and Girls is a thing, not necessarily going to do something about it. So she mentioned 16 states, but in states that have actually drafted bills and introduced them into their legislature, there's only 10 states with 19 bills. And at the moment, only six of those bills in five states have passed, us being one of them, two of them being in our state. So what we're trying to do is get to the point where we're not just saying, "We understand that there is a Missing and Murder Indigenous Women and Girls epidemic," we're saying there has to be something to be done about it. And that was just why we brought up the report by the Highway Patrol right now. So at the federal level, I do want to talk about, there were three pieces of legislation, both in the House and the Senate, none of which have passed. We have Savanna's Act, which is looking at the data collection reporting standards that we have throughout the country, increasing tribal sovereignty and autonomy, so they can reach into these data collection sets, and also implement better standards to be able to report and collect this data.
Erin, if I could stop you really quickly, on the Savanna's Act, because I saw you guys in DC lobbying, as well as Judge Demmer, so that passed the Senate but not the House?
That's right. And that was in the last Congress. In this Congress, it has passed neither chamber.
Are you going to address the Violence Against Women Act as well?
Absolutely. And Vawa is next.
Okay.
And then so Vawa is also there, it has not passed, it's actually expired at the moment, so all funds are expired funds, we don't know when that's going to expire. The funds are still being released, but we have no idea what the end date is on that yet.
And I should add that we had some interesting congressional disagreements, that had nothing to do with violence against women and women in Indian country, where the main defendant was a white man, but it came down to jurisdictional issues in the Alafon case. Basically, that people who were not a member of the tribe felt that they should not be in the criminal justice system of a sovereign nation, even though they were a defendant and had perpetrated a crime against a Native woman within the boundaries of the reservation. So it actually came down to a political argument, not, "How are we not addressing that Native women are being raped and murdered and killed, and when we have a defendant that is a white male, even though we could kick it over to the feds, the feds don't, sometimes they decline it." So that's what it came down to, and I was so, so disheartened to see when we are in February that.
They just declined to prosecute?
Some of them, yes.
Because there was no actual area of jurisdiction for them to work with. Because if they were a Caucasian perpetrator on Indian lands, they could say that, "You cannot hold me here, I have nothing to do with Indian country." And that was upheld in a lot of areas, because it was just so fuzzy all around the place. And Vawa, one of the reasons why it was held up, is because you could be prosecuted, it's extending tribal powers in order to prosecute on Indian lands, non-Indian people. There's also other pieces, like the boyfriend loop, a lot of this has to do with a toxic masculinity piece, where they're saying, "We're going to protect the male in this aspect," and that's why it's been held up. We're not seeing it introduced. We see it introduced in both chambers at the federal level, but I don't think it's going to pass. If anything, it will pass the House, but not necessarily the Senate.
If I could just add one more fact, because I think it's important in context, particularly for the, not just for the non-lawyers, but for the lawyers here, is that when we, another, which is a proud moment in this state's history, is what's holding that up in the discussion is the Alafon case that came out in the '70s, in this state that set the standard that tribes could not prosecute non-Indians or non-members. Now, there's a Durango that came after that, but the main issue there was, besides what Alafon was about, the main issue was tribes wanted the ability to prosecute non-members perpetuating or basically harming our women.
That's right.
And we are still, that is still good law today, we cannot do that.
That's right. And it's completely unfortunate, and us being able to address these things at the federal level has fallen on deaf ears, unfortunately.
Yes.
I do want to point out, when we're talking about those three pieces of federal legislation, there's a third one just studying Indian Crisis Act. So it's reviewing law enforcement at the federal level on why we got here and where we can go, that's literally the name of the act in the Senate. But when we're looking at these things, one of the things that we've noticed is that the urban community is completely left out. 71% of us, based on the 2010 census, live in urban areas. If you look at different forms of analysis, that's up to 74% of us here in the state of Washington who are living in urban areas, that's almost three out of every four of us. Yet, when you're looking at these pieces of legislation, which does strengthen tribal sovereignty and autonomy, which we fully support, we endorse the reintroduction of the Savanna's Act, they're not paying attention to, and they're not being respectful towards the urban community at this point. So that's what we're here to talk about as far as legislation. The city of Seattle has an extremely unique opportunity right now, to learn from the failure of the rest of the country, to actually address this in good legislation, to say that, "We're going to put some teeth behind this. We're going to look at our justice system, we're going to look at law enforcement, and we're going to hold transparency and accountability at the highest possible level." So when we say that, what it means, including our entire Native community, our tribal partners, as well as our urban community. So we do that in four different ways. The first one is referencing urban Indian communities and data and legislative findings. In the first place, when we were talking about these things, it always falls on tribal peoples, and that's true, we are tribal peoples. We come from sovereign authorities, as far as the tribes go, but we're living in urban areas, and a lot, there is no Indian land in the city of Seattle, although we are on Indian land. But the way that it works, as far as the federal government goes, the city of Seattle goes, the state of Washington goes, this is not Indian land. So what we're trying to say is, this is Indian land, make sure you pay attention to our entire community. The other piece of that is adding the urban confer policy to this. So no matter where we are, a lot of the times, we talk about the federal trust responsibility and the fact that you have a tribal consultation, and that is an extremely important thing. But the fact is, we have a health authority as urban organizations, through the Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, for an urban confir, and that's what we're asking for. We ask for, we advocate for that at the federal level, we're also asking for that at the local level, and we are in an urban area. So if anything does happen in Seattle, and especially knowing that you're there, Chair Juarez, that we're going to get to that place. But again, we can be that blueprint for the rest of the country to do this right and include our entire community.
Erin, let me ask you a quick question, you know, there's been all this fanfare, I heard it on NPR and everywhere else, that AG Ferguson is now saying, "Well, when I decide to do something, I'll check with the tribes." I wanted to say, excuse me, that's been the law in consultation for, well before President Clinton, in the executive orders on government-to-government consultation, it's, I don't know why there was such a big fanfare and a big pat on the back, because the tribes have successfully sued and made it clear, in our resources, in our people, that this is Indian country, and we are not restricted to the four corners of a reservation, and neither are our rights. So I want to get your opinion about that, if, is that, I don't know if that's a, if it's a rah-rah moment, or?
That's how I interpreted it, I'm glad that people are saying this in a very, I would say this was a very national thing that he was trying to push out there, but the fact is, the state of Washington has a Centennial Accord. It's already written into that the executive of the state of Washington holds consultation and upholds a federal trust with the tribal people in the state. So that already exists, you're right. And why that had to be announced, again, I'm not quite sure, we have the Centennial Accord meeting every year. So I'm not going to comment too much further on that one, but again, it already exists, and we already thank the state of Washington for upholding that. And yes, we do enjoy meeting with the governor and all the secretaries when we go to Centennial Accord.
I think I would just like to add something here, so we, I'm just going to reiterate what Erin said, is we always support and strengthen tribal sovereignty.
That's right.
We never want to touch resources that go into tribal communities, and I think that a lot of the work around the Tribal Law and Order Act, and even some of the Vawa allocations, all of those things are fantastic, because we do need that work in Indian country, right, and in our tribal communities. And what we are trying to call attention to is that we have needs in urban environments as well.
That's right.
And we have an opportunity here, with the city of Seattle, to do this differently, right, to not just generate another proclamation, but to actually generate legislation that has resources and teeth to it, so that we can create true change. I think that's what we're getting at. So we can stay on the jurisdictional challenges, or we can stay on sovereignty and all of that, we are trying to expand this, to meet the needs of all American Indian and Alaska Native people, regardless of where you live. So right now, we have an urban confir, but it only lives within the IHS system.
That's right.
And so what Erin is sharing today is that we're asking government systems like yours to take a stand, and when it comes to issues that affect our health and our well-being and our lives, in this situation, our lives, that you give us an opportunity to have a voice. And that's what an urban confir would allow us to do.
Is that like a new term of art that came out of the federal stuff?
It's in IHS.
In IHS?
Yeah, so IHS created tribal consultation, right? And tribal consultation lives in all government systems, and then IHS created an urban confir, so that there, that urbans could be included in the conversation.
We're one of the few areas in the federal trust where the authority to advocate for Native people outside of tribal lands exists. So in the area of health, we have that under the Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, where we can, we are a health authority for Native people, and we're allowed at that table through the confir mechanism.
Right. And we're also lucky that we have Liz Taylor here, and some other members from the Kalis Nation, who have an opportunity to not only have the brick and mortar in a building, but be able to provide all those services for Native folks and their spouses and children, even though they're not per se on the tribal trust land of the Kalis people. You can thank yours truly for that, that lawsuit. You're welcome.
We do thank you for that, Kalis thanks you for that. Every tribe that can put their facility into trust through the IHS thanks you for that, it's a very big deal, because we're actually spreading to those places, but the urban Indian health programs like us, we exist because not everybody can do that. That is still an overhead cost. Try to get some IHS facilities money, you're probably going to pass away before anything like that ever happens, it's just not something that happens. So then, when we're talking about the funding piece, I do want to go into this a little more. Again, an opportunity for the city of Seattle, as we're looking at this, we need a carve-out when we're talking about the urban pieces. And again, when we're talking about those federal pieces, we're asking for carve-outs whenever money's going to the state, or the county, or the city. And waiting for the Fed to do that is something that's going to take forever. And again, here's this blueprint aspect, we can be the beacon for the rest of the country, where the Seattle, city of Seattle can just say, "We're going to do this, we're going to recognize our urban community, we're going to make sure that they're included in this, and we're going to show you how it's done right."
You want to know why? So Vawa dollars trickle into the state, and then into county systems, and then they are tasked with serving our people. And what do they do? They knock on my office door and they say, "Hey, Esther, how can we serve your people better?"
After the money's been spent.
And my answer is, "You don't have to, we're doing it just fine. Why are those resources going to you when they should be going to us? Do you see what I'm saying? This is something that, given our situation in Seattle, where we have city and county working very closely with one another, that from an administrative perspective, you can make changes.
Okay.
I think one of the incredible things that came out of the Canadian National Inquiry on Missing and Murder Indigenous Women and Girls, is that the Commission very specifically called it a genocide.
I know, they did.
Very specifically. And in fact, they haven't gotten their Prime Minister to say it, he's avoiding it. Several members of Parliament have also said it's not true. So it's, it's one of those issues, again, where people don't want to use the word that recognizes that they have responsibility, and that it is ongoing. I think that for the Commission to put, to do that, and I, again, I've been doing, talking to a lot of people, and I always say it's a genocide, I think I've seen it printed twice, because again, people are even afraid to print it in their newspapers. What would it look like to do more than, than for the city of Seattle to say something like that? That we recognize that there is an ongoing genocide against Missing and Murder Indigenous Women and Girls in the city of Seattle, and as such, we are going to take these actions. We're going to work with the Urban Indian Health Institute to correct the racial misclassification on all SPD, I'm just, you know, I'm throwing everything I can, on all SPD data to properly represent what has been going on in the city of Seattle, and to also correct those African-American women who deserve to be recognized in that data also. How are we going to partner to ensure that officers are trained correctly on capturing race and ethnicity? That when an article comes out in the Seattle Times that says you've been racially misclassifying, that you reach out to the organization who brought that up? You know, how do we build those partnerships and relationships? And how do we do something that has teeth? Because like Esther said, a proclamation is great, but is it just paper? Because if it is, I don't have time for it anymore. My people are dying. I get emails, and I talk to people every single day, who have lost their loved ones, who are experiencing trauma they should never experience, and our responsibility to them is to take action now. And again, I appreciate of what the King County Board of Health is doing, because nobody else is doing that in the country, addressing sexual violence and Missing and Murder Indigenous Women by looking at the institutional and structural racism that allows for this violence to continue. But what else can we do? That's just a beginning. Now is our time.
And I think we want to avoid the situation that came out with the state's report from the Highway Patrol, because that happened without meaningful consultation. They came to us, Abigail and I were actually at the meeting together, and they didn't get anything that we said. We told them exactly what was going to happen if they didn't work with this, from a community-led standpoint, that's what actually has to happen. Abigail created the methodologies that are going to make this successful, and they ignored all of those. In this report, they're only missing persons, so we're asking for that meaningful consultation when this thing happens, something has to come of this. And then those carve-outs, to make sure that our tribal epidemiology centers that created this methodology are the people who are leading this. Because when it comes to Indian country and trying to fix issues that are in there, it's not going to happen with somebody who's from outside of Indian country who tries to do this. Governance has to happen with us, that's where you find success. When it happens to us, that's when you find failure. And that's what we want to point out. And the very last thing that we want to say, is no matter what you're doing, we're talking about policy when it comes to urban American Indians and Alaska Natives, that we do have definitions at the federal level, so no matter where you write them, if we are going to take federal dollars and we're going to divest them off through the state system, you can put in the US codes to make sure that we're there. Urban Indian organizations and tribal epidemiology centers exists, all of this is on our website at the Seattle Indian Health Board on our Government Affairs page. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues, if they have any questions or concerns or anything they want to follow up with the presenters before I make any comments.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to express my sincere gratitude to all of you for the work that you've been doing in this space. And there are multiple times when you all were speaking, and particularly when you're sharing some of the stories of some of the women and the families impacted, that really were, created quite an emotion for me. And, and I just, I just want to, again, echo my gratitude to you all for this hard, hard, hard work, that is re-traumatizing just by virtue of having to do it. And so I really appreciate your willingness to, to take this so seriously, because I know it's, I know that it's, it's something that has existed for a long time in your community, and I think it's really important for us to create spaces, in a space like this, that is incredibly colonized, to have this kind of conversation that is real and raw and sincere. And I want to express my gratitude to Chair Juarez for making space and dedicating the entire meeting time to have a conversation about this. It's been getting a lot of attention from mainstream media, but of course, we all know that this has been on the front of Indigenous folks' minds for a very, very long time. So I'm really grateful for an opportunity to share this space and have an opportunity to learn more and to listen, and to really work in partnership and collaboration on figuring out how Seattle can lead the way here. So I know we are in good hands with Chair Juarez in terms of advancing an agenda forward that will hopefully show the way to many others. And so, and I'm originally from Yakima County, and so I've grown up around Indigenous folks all my life, and, and I just, I really appreciate the amount of commonality that, that as a Latinx woman, I share with a lot of Indigenous communities, and, and it's, and it's personal, right? It's, you can feel the heaviness of the conversation and the realities of the circumstances of repeated trauma and just not being seen. And there are deep, disturbing reasons for that. And so I really appreciate you calling them out, and giving us an opportunity to do something about it. So thank you.
If I may add, before I let Councilwoman Bagshaw go, that it's wonderful to have Councilwoman Gonzalez on this committee, because she Gonzalez on this committee because she also chairs the Public Safety, and you've seen the great work that she's done. While you were doing your presentation, she did lean into me and she said something that is, and I know she, she understood it immediately. This is, goes beyond just Missing Murder Indigenous Women. This is about genocide that's been going on for 500 years. So there was a policy to kill our people, our women and our children first. And so not only do we have the insight of somebody and the heart of somebody who believes in justice, but Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Bagshaw is the co-chair of Board of Health along with myself, but she's a co-chair of Board of Health for your subcommittee. Councilmember Gonzalez also was on that committee. Now, Councilmember Muscata is now on the Board of Health with us. But you have the right people at the table that, what you said, and I'll stop in a moment because I want other people to talk before I wrap up, that when we put our minds to actually doing something, we will do it. Because that's the kind of badass women we are. Okay. I'll leave it at that. Councilmember Bagshaw, it's all yours.
I gave her a bumper sticker recently that said, "She is badass." She did. You know, it didn't, it didn't, all right, let me start over. This is really not easy for me. And it was pretty obvious, sitting here with Juarez and Gonzalez and Swant and Muscata and Pacheco, that I'm the only white woman. But that said, the hurt that you just described just kills me. And I have to acknowledge that the separation of the children from families, what you experienced over the last 150 years, and again, what our country is doing. We have an opportunity to raise what you're talking about and to raise it here, but to take the action that you're asking us for, the solutions. Would you please not take my picture while I'm sitting here weeping? I really want to acknowledge, and with the deepest respect, what you have raised. And I know that you know, Abigail, how much I care for your sister, Colleen, and everything that we can do for the Chief Seattle Club, to be able to take the land that you have lost, respect that it was the land that you've lived on for so many, so many generations, and then turn that into respectful action that is meaningful to you, meaningful to all of us. I also want to acknowledge and say thank you that our police are here, our representatives, our city attorney is here, and their representatives, and the fact that all of you have stayed means a great deal to me. Is the mayor's office here too? I'm sorry, if whoever's here, I don't, I don't see them, but I, I just really want to say thank you that we're all in this together. So your study is remarkable. And like you said, it was unfunded. Goodness knows the work that you put in on this, so I, I really want to appreciate that. We're never going to see money from the federal government, particularly with this POTUS 45. So we've got to do it ourselves. And I do want to acknowledge and appreciate the fact that the governor has a lot more to do, but the, but they're at least saying the words. So I'm going to be marching right next with my sister, Ms. Juarez. I have such respect for you, my dear. And the fact that this very committee is named with Indigenous people and Native Americans and that we care about this, so I just, I just am very respectful. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bagshaw. Is there anything you want to add, Councilwoman Pacheco?
I just want to thank Councilmember Juarez for putting this committee meeting together.
Turn your mic on. Your mic's not on.
Oh.
Pull it towards you, buddy.
There you go. I just want to thank Councilmember Juarez for convening this meeting together. And just thank you for your bravery, for speaking and speaking, speaking your truth and speaking, sharing the stories of the individuals that were impacted. It's not easy, and I know just bringing this to light and the work that's been put in was, was not easy. And so I just want to recognize that and say thank you.
Thank you. And so I'm going to wrap up briefly, and I think there's been a lot of, I knew this was going to be a tough day. To be really honest with you, I was kind of dreading it this morning, and I did my prayers. And then, of course, I got texts from Colleen and you and pictures and making me feel better because as a victim of sexual assault and violence, I too know what that's like to be on a reservation and to not be heard. So I started this with a little bit of historical context about colonialism and historical trauma and what that has done to our people. And I wasn't trying to be provocative or simplistic when I said our first president referred to our people as wild beasts and beasts of prey. There are still people today that refer to us as that. So I want to make this commitment to you, and that's why I'm glad that I have these strong women at this table, and of course, you too, Abel, keep you out. We, we've had an opportunity, and particularly Nagin read through, and I attempted to read as much as I could, the summary of the Canadian Report of a, and just the executive summary is 117 pages, but it is phenomenal. And when I kind of, I handed you guys the green sheet, when they call the call for justice, those are, those are actionable things that they're actually physically going to do. So we, us, or we'll be teeing up legislation to work with you on what does this ordinance or legislation look like as we work with Pete Holmes, the shop and city attorney. I've also had a really wonderful conversation, more than one, including this morning with Chief Best with SPD. Everyone understands what you say now when you say decolonizing the data. And of course, it's important to us in our city. We don't want to have the reputation as the number one city that has the most Missing Murder Indigenous Women and Girls, and certainly not be number two in the nation with that same title. So I just want to end on this note because I plan to have a few more follow-ups, meetings of where we're going on the legislation and to get things done before we leave on recess. And we would have had, what I was trying to do is, and I know, I'm just going to put Abigail on blast here, Abigail has been traveling everywhere and taking this show on the road and has been in states. I've run into her in Washington DC along with Judge Demmer and Esther. And we were running in and out of Senator Patty Murray's office and Senator Cantwell's office. I saw your guys' Seattle Indian board drum there, and I took a picture of it. We're like, you know, all, all of us were in the hallway in February lobbying for Savanna's Act and for the reauthorization of Vawa and the money. So I want to share with you that we hope to tee up that legislation and having these laboring hours and who understand it, that, but having the Canadian Report come out, I think is, was a blessing because now I can physically look at it and say, "There's a lot of stuff here that we can do too." I think the state law is important. I think it's a good step forward, but I need more than two liaisons.
Yeah.
I have a proclamation, please. Two liaisons and a proclamation.
Yeah. I mean, we, I, I was thankful because as you, we all know, when we are moving these kind of civil rights movements forward, you don't get it all the first swoop. You know what I mean? When people chant, "What do we want? We want it now." Sometimes I'm like, you know, the world doesn't work like that. Sometimes we've got to roll up our sleeves and just keep marching. And that is what we have done as Native people. If we had bought into this historical trauma, as you've heard me say many times when I do speeches, the other side of trauma is resiliency. And we have that. That's why we're still here. Despite everything that we know that was done to our people, we're still physically here. So with that, I want to thank you. I know it wasn't easy. I want to thank my colleagues for showing up and being here. I know it was a little bit more emotionally charged than, you know, normally, we're not sitting here arguing about adus and dadus.
Bark. We usually talk about bark in this committee.
Bark. People mad about bark, off-leash dogs and pee patches. But not to say you're, I'm glad that I have my community, our community, everyone's community, Native communities in this committee because we are going to get this done. And so with that, if there's anything else you want to say before we adjourn, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to say one thing, and I'm a storyteller, so I'm going to tell you a story. I was actually, when I ran into you in DC, I had just, at that time, a Native woman I had presented at something, and she came up to me and she told me this story about how in her family, all of the women that she had died in the past 20 years, they buried them all with bruises because they all had been victims of violence. And she told me, you know, she'd gotten used to doing that, that it was just normal. And she said, "We cannot let this be normal anymore." And she leaned into me, and I remember it because her hair was down and, you know, this, basically, she like covered my own face in her hair and is like breathing this story and this strength to me at the same time. She said, "We have to keep going. We have to keep talking. And what will happen is supposed to happen when it happens." And so when I think about this meeting, because I will say, the councilwoman has been asking